Okay, good evening Byram Hills and welcome to the Education Meeting for Tuesday, March 16th, 2021. You please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as we slouch our way to spring, it's nice to see everyone again. For the record, we met, the board convened at 7:02 PM. We went into executive session to discuss two district matters, one being of the district calendar and one being recruitment, and then Board of Education discussed general matter regarding board officers for the next academic year. Okay, at this point, I would ask Dr. Kaltenek, are there any public comments waiting to be heard at this point?
No, there were not.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's agenda? Second, please. All in favor? May I have a motion? Oh, that's it. That's right. There's no, I forgot about that. Okay. Got me on that one, Jen. I realize there's no other consent agendas items. That moves us to Special Report, item six on our agenda, Budget Hearing Number Two, Review of the Proposed 2021-2022 Budget Expenditures by the Administration for Special Services, Fine Arts, Technology, and Curriculum Instruction. So Jen, I pass it to you and you may proceed.
All right, and for anyone who's been watching, watched first budget hearing, this is Budget Hearing Two. Mia will go through the calendar and the schedule with us tonight. But this is a continuation of a look at the expenditure side of the budget. I am happy tonight to be in the company of Jill Boynton, Director of Special Services, of Pete Pollack's Director of Fine Arts, and Andrew Taylor, Director of Technology and Professional Development. Tonight, we are going to see, very similar to the principals' budgets, many reductions in budgets or budgets that came in at a very modest amount. That with the exception of computer-assisted instruction. But I think we all understand why we have relied heavily on computer-assisted instruction at this point. And I think that Andrew Taylor's proposed budget is not only more than justifiable, I think it is also prudent that the expenditures are sent out in that way. So thank you so much for our directors who are here tonight for working so hard on these budgets. And Tim Kaltenek, who is also going to be presenting tonight on the curriculum budget. I will talk a little bit about Public Information, which is our media center. But I want to thank Tim and I don't have, you could see it in, board members can see it in his write-up in his section. But Tim really gives the district a way for us to look at this, right? So we're looking always at the budget through student empowerment, 21st century skills, instructional focus, curricular focus, leadership and character education. And this has really been guiding every single one of our administrators in the development of their budget. Tim, I want to thank you for that. It brings in everything from STEAM, social emotional learning, critical thinking, collaboration, communication, all of the tenets that we find central to our mission in educating our children. So thank you, Tim, for helping us with that guide and to our directors here this evening. And Kelly, I think I will leave it to you to introduce our first section.
Yeah, just turn it over quick to Mia to just to kind of review the calendar as we've done in the past.
Hi, everybody. Welcome to Budget Hearing Two, March 16th. Our Budget Hearing Three will be on March 23rd. We will talk about operations, athletics, transportation. Budget Hearing Four will be on April 13th, the final proposed budget. And April 20th is budget adoption. Budget Hearing Five is the review of the proposed budget. And the D-Day, our vote is May 18th at Quittenden Middle School between 6:30 and 9:00. Don't know, Jen, do you know if the PTSA is going to be offering the curbside drop-off?
I not only don't know if they're going to be offering curbside drop-off. Kelly, do we even know if we're doing mail-in voting or in-person voting? I would assume we're doing in-person voting, but we don't even know that at this point.
Yeah, yeah, still kind of in the air at this point. It's in-person voting is kind of going forward. And then unless anything changes, you would request an absentee ballot for that. At this point, it could change very soon.
And a reminder to the public that it's Budget Hearing Two and Three that are times where people can make comments about the budget and ask. Of course, you can ask questions at any time, but to make comments about the budget. And go ahead, Kelly.
Yep, I'm sorry. I just want to jump in just to clarify what Jen said. Budget Hearing Two and Three is when members of the community may request adds or deletions to the budget. This is the time for them to do it. Thank you.
Thanks, Ira.
Just in general, the total budget increase for next year is a 0.75% increase in terms of expenditures. That's $709,009. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill just to review programs for students with special needs and provide you with a little more information about her budget. Jill?
All right. Good evening. It's nice to see everyone. So the special services budget that's proposed for the 2021-2022 school year encompasses special services and health services. We provide special education programs and services for students with special needs, health services, psychological services, and accommodations for students who require a 504 accommodation plan. If you look at the slides, the salary line, there is a 0.7% increase, which is due to contractual obligations. The equipment line has no change and remains constant. The 16% decrease in the contractual and other line is attributed to the decrease in the number of settlements as some students have returned to our district and/or other students have graduated or exited. Last school year, we had 16 settlements. This year, we have 10 settlements and two students will be graduating in June. Additionally, last year, we had 22 students who were placed by the CSE and out-of-district programs. Four students graduated and three students left the district. This year, we have three new out-of-district placements for a total of 16 students that are placed out of district, and that's the lowest number of students that the district has in out-of-district placements in the last six years. The 55% increase in the BOSI's line is attributed to two new student placements. We have a student at Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's this year and a student at Southern Westchester BOSI's, which will continue into the upcoming year. Additionally, we contract with Vital Behavior Services through BOSI's in order to meet the needs of some of our in-district students who may have challenging behaviors and require additional support. The behaviorists assist with providing supports to students who struggle with school avoidance, maybe work avoidance, oppositional behaviors, and different types of acting-out behaviors. The behaviorists from Vital Behavior Services collect and analyze data for functional behavioral assessments that are put together. They assist with the development of behavior intervention plans after reviewing the data with the entire CSE team. The behaviorists also provide support to our guidance counselors, to our administrators, teachers, school psychologists, support staff, and to our parents. There's a 13% decrease in materials and supplies. Last year, we had purchased Wilson reading materials, language for learning, connecting math concepts, and reading mastery curriculum for our 812 ungraded program. This year, we trimmed the budget as much as possible for our materials and supplies. Going into next year, we're going to continue to focus on our integrated co-teaching programs and we will be working with the outside contracted agency through BOSI's to continue the coaching model for professional development that we had started prior to the pandemic. Our teachers in grades K-8 have implemented iReady, which is a progress monitoring tool that we've been using this year. It's been very helpful for them to really zero in on where our students are functioning, help the teachers write IEPs based on student needs, and really develop goals that are addressing the students' weaknesses. We're going to continue to work on that this summer and our teachers will focus on writing and developing the learning paths. And I think that's about all that I have for my slide.
Jill, just a quick question on BOSI's. So is it that BOSI's has new programs that they didn't have before? Or are these existing programs where we just have a student that has special needs that match up with this particular program?
Good question. So there was a student that moved into the district and those programs were existing at BOSI's. So we had a new entrant and then we also had one student that required more support. So we had two students that were newly placed.
Got it. Okay, any more questions for Jill? All right, thank you, Jill.
Can I just thank the board for their continued support on behalf of our faculty, our students, our staff of special needs, our students with special needs and their families? And I really appreciate it. So thank you.
We thank you, Jill, for your good work for them and your contributions do not go unnoticed.
Thank you, Ira.
Okay, thank you, Jill. So I'll turn it over to Andrew to discuss computer-assisted instruction and talk us through a little bit about technology for this year and going forward to next year. Andrew?
Good evening. Thank you all for having me tonight to talk about the computer-assisted instruction budget. Just go through the budget really quickly here. The salaries, you see a 5% increase in salaries. That's really not due to any salary increases, but actually reallocating the budget from one line to the technology budget because the summer technology work was always in another line and we relocated some of those funds so that was appropriately budgeted going forward. Equipment services, equipments, even though we've added a lot of equipment to the district, that stays zero because most of our equipment is actually purchased through IPAs and BOSI's services. So that stays very flat. Same with contractual services. BOSI's services, you see a 14.8% increase in BOSI's services, but I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Most of that is in software increases. We moved some of the software into the BOSI's services for EdLaw 2D compliance. They actually cover the EdLaw 2D compliance. And then also through this last year, we've increased our software purchases dramatically as to serve students better. Also some bandwidth increase. We went and increased our bandwidth twice to accommodate needs. In the materials and supplies, 7.5%, that's really in one line. And that is for printing needs in some of the buildings to cover some printing costs. So I just wanted to take a second to step back and really use the opportunity to thank the Byram Hills Technology Staff and then walk you through some of the things that we've been working on this year. The technology staff has been, as you can, as you know, very busy working on a variety of projects. Just to name a few of them, this year, we've added over 1,000 Chromebooks for students, vetted 350 laptops for teachers, 400 Viewsonics thanks to the BHGF, 200 document cameras, a whole host of other peripherals, headsets that are needed for instruction. We've added support for students in the building and teachers in the building, but also students and teachers at home, a whole new layer of support that we never had in the past. We've added a whole structure for that, increased bandwidth, and outfitted classrooms in every building, new classrooms. We've outfitted them with Promethean boards, access points, devices, anything that's needed to do instruction in these new instructional spaces. The data team, we have an amazing data team here that not only does the reporting and the state reporting and the normal data stuff that they're required to do every year, but this year, they've actually helped roll out this enormous amount of software that we've purchased. All of that software has to be set up, provisioned, meaning all of the users have to be put into the system and appropriately put into the right containers in the system. And then we provide training and ongoing support and the data team actually helps support a lot of that as well as the countless COVID reports and rebuilding reports that you've heard about and in front of you. A lot of that is generated by the data team. And then the fantastic professional development team that we have here. And I know Tim has presented on some of the professional development that we've been working on, hundreds and hundreds of hours of professional development for staff. But I also just want to point out, we've also added layers of support like tech medics in the fall to support teachers as well as parent professional development, a whole series of parent trainings throughout the fall. And as well, a whole parent portal with a website with additional resources. We've also added a whole level of support this year for teaching aides and supporting them in their work and their use of technology as they took on new roles within the building. So altogether, I just want to say thank you to those three groups within the Byram Hills Technology Staff that have been doing some really amazing work. And I just want to end by talking about a couple of budget items that we're working on going forward. We're working on transitioning the district to be 100% mobile. We have a lot of desktops in clerical spaces and offices. And we're working on through this summer, making all of those mobile desktops so that anyone in the district will be able to pick up and relocate to another part of the district or home if needed going forward. The cost difference from the desktops and the mobile devices is negligible. So it really was a good move to sort of just have that capacity as we go forward. We're doing a very large infrastructure project this summer where we're going to be replacing every switch router and battery backup in every closet in the district. That equipment actually went end-of-life last year. We were planning on upgrading them last summer, the summer of 2020, but we decided to push it a year and we were able to get the company to extend the life and give us one more year of support for it so we could push out that this coming summer. So we'll be doing that major infrastructure project this year in every closet in every building. It was a good time to do that because we are actually leveraging two funding sources. We're leveraging the BOSI's IPA to purchase the equipment and then also applying for federal E-rate funding to leverage the federal funds to support that, which will cover a good chunk of that cost. This will allow us to not only have better, more reliable equipment that's up to date, but it's also going to have a much better reporting system so we can find out when things happen quicker and we're not waiting for something to break. We'll actually know when something has a functional problems built into it or if there's some sort of area. It also standardizes us with the RIC so that we have some continuity of service with them. In 2022, we'll be replacing all the access points and that will do a complete refresh of our home network. We're also doing a refocusing on the data insecurity in EdLaw 2D, re-inventoring all of our software, all of our new hardware this summer to make sure that everything that has gone out is actually came back. We're going to do a complete re-inventory this summer to track all of that. And then we're also starting a process of evaluating all the new software. We've been evaluating them all year long, but we want to really dig into all of them and look and see, are we actually purchasing all the software that we purchased? Do we need all the grade levels, all the licenses that we have? Make sure that they're being used with fidelity and they're actually making an impact on the student learning. And we're going to continue that process throughout the year to really make sure if there's anything we can trim down over the course of next year, we will. Any questions?
Andrew, just a quick comment and then a quick question. On the comment side, just I haven't seen you in a while. I just wanted to thank you because clearly in the fall, there were some very quick, in the summer really, there were some quick decisions that needed to be made to buy some significant pieces of equipment to enable hybrid learning. And you know, I've got to say, now we're so many months later and obviously like everything's worked really well. And I've just, I've heard a lot of stories from private schools, from public schools of schools that either couldn't buy the equipment they wanted because they waited too long and then there was no inventory, or they bought equipment, spent a lot of money, and the equipment just didn't really work out. And so you just, you know, you and I know it was a team effort with Tim and Jen and so many others, but just thank you for all of your thought process around just getting our hybrid learning to function really, really well. On the question side, just BOSI's, we're starting, I mean, these are some big numbers that we're spending with BOSI's. So I'm not questioning the spending at all. In terms of technology, we clearly need to spend on technology. My question for you is, is BOSI's for the items that we procure through them typically our best bet in terms of pricing? Or are there any sort of regulatory impediments that preclude us from going to different places, whether it's a different BOSI's or outside of BOSI's where we can get things cheaper, but we just can't because of the regulations? Like, how do you think about that, that relationship and what's working? Is there anything that's not working and that we should know as we do our advocacy?
Yeah, I'm one of BOSI's biggest fans and also biggest critics. So I've been on the Advisory Board of BOSI's for the last six years, helping to guide some of the program development that they have there and working with them in a variety of areas. I think that we are, we are pretty, we shop around for services. We don't buy everything through BOSI's. But oftentimes, because of the state bidding that they're able to do, they don't bid just from our region. They bid across the entire state and they have statewide contracts for software and hardware and things. They're able to get really competitive pricings. And beyond the competitive pricings, we also get aid on those. So we get a portion of that money back next year, the following year. So there are some benefits of using them as well as they've really been working to redefine their support systems and how they support the products so that what we get from them, I feel, are quality services right now.
Thank you. Okay, great.
Two quick comments and maybe a half a question, but also wanted to echo Scott's comments. Andrew, thanks for the ramp up and everything you've done to put us where we are today and we appreciate that. The numbers in the budget here, the things you talked about with respect to the network upgrades this year, that those numbers are baked in here. I think you said 22 on something, but on the networking stuff for this year to improve, I guess, communications and stuff, that's all in this number?
Yeah, to leverage the funding best, what we actually did is we used an IPA from the 2020-2021 school year and an IPA from the 2021-2022 school year. So there's actually two IPAs and we backed them up. So one is actually going to start in June and the next one's going to start in July, but it'll actually be one project. So we were actually able to use funding for two years, but work with the vendor to create it as one project. And that allowed us to do two things. Not only just use the two IPAs, it allowed us to use two different E-rate sources because we had E-rate dollars that were expiring at the end of this year, which we had been saving. We knew that they were going to be expiring at the end of this year. So we'd been planning this, to do this in two phases anyways. So we were able to use an old E-rate and then a brand-new E-rate that just came out for a new funding source for next year. So by backing them up like this, we were able to put it all into here. Part of it is actually coming out of this year's budget as well. So the project is kind of stretched over both of them.
And some of the security stuff, I mean, I think cameras and things like that that we bought the year before, and I know that some of that's not in here, but supporting, you know, some of that surveillance equipment and stuff that falls under you is correct, Andrew?
Sometimes we support it from a technical standpoint and helping to set it up. But the actual budget for the cameras, we've purchased some of them out of our budget in the past, but it's actually mostly supported out of O and M.
Okay. Last year, we created a code, safety and security code specifically for charity guards and camera installations. And so an IPA, in case you don't know what it is, it's basically a five-to-six-year payoff of a equipment. For example, you'd be able to purchase a large amount of equipment and you could pay it off over an extended period through BOSI's. So we're able to manage that and you receive aid on that as well.
Great. And then the last question, just around security and, you know, just the prevalence of cybercrime and hacking. I mean, that's a continued focus that I would hope you and the district has in and around, you know, our teachers' safety and security of their private and obviously all of our residents' information. I mean, you know, things are pretty crazy right now in the cybercrime world and I just hope that's something that's top on your list as you review the things we need to continue to be diligent about.
Yeah, so I think I'm going to be coming back and maybe doing a small report to the board later on with some more details on that. But I will say that we actually did a penetration test this week. We did it last week. We got the report just yesterday. And the outside partner that actually did it wanted to sell us services, but when they did the penetration test, they said, "We don't have anything we can sell you." They actually, we scored almost perfect on it. There was only two areas that we needed to address and they were very small. We actually addressed them today. So we've been doing regular, we did a Google audit a year ago, a year and a half ago. We're going to do another Google audit to look at our Google services. We've got three or four different products that monitor, maintain data security on our systems. A couple of them are pretty innovative that we were one of the first districts around to use it because it's, and it's, when I get a chance to show it to you, I don't like to name products on public meetings because that's actually a vulnerability. Our next thing that we're going to really work on with data security is the human vulnerability, really focusing on more on training and support of teachers so that there's not something inadvertently shared or done on our network because most of these attacks happen by someone doing something. We can monitor a lot of it, but we can't monitor everything. So that's really the next focus for next year is how can we really support and train teachers and administrators and anyone in our system to be more thoughtful about what they might do on the system?
Great. Thank you. Thanks for, you know, the attention there. I just, I think it's so important for us. So thank you.
Any more questions for Andrew? All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you very much, Andrew. Thank you.
Okay, Pete, art and music instruction.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Pete Pollack. I know we haven't met in person yet, but one day, I hope. In any case, it's my pleasure to talk to you a little bit about the art and music instruction and the budget that we have prepared for the coming school year. You'll notice when you look through most of the list, you know, we tried to reduce where we could. Our spending this year has been very different than it's been in the years past just in terms of the types of things that we're ordering and what those costs look like. You know, we weren't ordering bell covers and face masks for instruments and things like that a year ago. So if we start at the top, looking under the art program, you'll notice that there's an increase of 2% in salaries and that's really per the teacher contract and a little bit of changing lanes. The contractual and other pieces is flat. We look at the materials and supplies and we were able to reduce that by about 4%. Some of that is simply because some of the materials and supplies that would normally be used this year, think about chemicals in the darkroom and things like that, where we're using more digital photography this year. So we were able to sort of save some of those material supplies that we'll incorporate into next year, assuming we can then use them again. So that's what we're really looking at in the art program. When we look at the music program, the thing that might jump off the page to you is the 13.6% variance in the salaries. And that was due to, at the time that the budget was initially prepared, we had received a retirement from a seasoned teacher and some other staffing changes and we brought in new staff, myself included, a choral director included, some other changes that are coming in and they were less expensive in a sense. So that's why the large variance there in the 13.6. The other pieces are pretty much flat. There is a small reduction in, like I said, the same type of thing. We're looking at materials and supplies and contractual services in effort to try to trim the fat. So that sort of gives you a little snapshot of the budget. I'd love to share with you just some things that we have been up to because you might be sitting here thinking, "What is the music program doing these days?" And so I hope that you'll indulge me and just maybe give me two minutes to tell you a little bit about some of the highlights that we can celebrate this year. So we've got about 14 students that have been displaying art in national art shows and competitions and things like that that we can celebrate. In fact, this Thursday, and a couple, what's today, Tuesday, on Thursday night, we will be inducting 14 or 17 new students into the National Art Honor Society. And that, you know, the criterion for that is really scholarship in art and service and character. Some other pieces, we are actually putting together a virtual art show that'll feature artwork from across our district. That'll happen in May. And we're very, very excited about that and there'll be information about that coming. But it's just an opportunity to sort of celebrate the work that we have been doing and much of it has been digital. And then when it's not digital, we've been making it digital. So we'll be able to share it a little bit easier with our community and with all of you. In terms of music, music has been a big challenge this year in terms of what we've been able to do and not do. I will tell you that, you know, all of my colleagues in schools throughout Westchester, Rockland, and Putnam Counties, you know, they were amazed that we were able to come back to school as of September 1st. And so the challenges that we had been taking on in the beginning of the year are in many ways the same challenges that other schools are taking on now as they are sort of coming back into school full-time. But some of those challenges meant that we would not have been able to sing and we've not been able to play in school. Despite that, our teachers have been doing amazing things and they have been rising to the occasion. So for example, in the younger grades, we've taken on some computer-assisted instruction programs, including Quaver Music, which just offers an interactive sort of digital format for kids to build skills and explore music in a way that is a little bit more hands-on. We have been, all of our music teachers have really gotten on the fast track of how to prepare virtual performances. You know, becoming a video editor overnight is a pretty big task. And I will tell you, our music teachers have risen to the occasion. They have had students submitting videos and compiling them and syncing them up and being able to present some type of digital ensemble performance. And so we're happy with that, with the little snippets that we've been doing and the, you know, bits of magic that they've been able to capture in their classrooms. The theater program, as you know, we put together a little bit of a cabaret performance earlier in this year. And they are working on a production, a fiddler on the roof, that is set to sort of premiere on May 14th and 15th. We postponed that big main stage production till the end of the year, thinking that the restrictions would be a little bit more conducive to a type of performance. So we know that we may be, very well be digital entirely, but we're still sort of holding out hope that maybe they'll be able to invite some parents and things like that to participate and to celebrate the work that our kids have been doing. So it's a little bit about the successes that we've seen this year. I will tell you that despite the fact that our students have not been able to play for a good part of the year, we have started playing and that our students have not been able to play for a good part of the year, we have started playing and have started singing at the middle school and high school levels immediately after the February break. So we had worked very, very hard in conjunction with sort of a lot of different partnerships in the CDC and Department of Health in laying out some new safety protocols. And and so we've been very, very conservative and smart in our approach. And as such, we've seen great success in this and our parents are confident that we are taking the right steps to ensure their safety. So we have been able to play. The restrictions are tough. They are 12 feet apart and and but we're adhering to them. And, you know, it's every little nuance you can think of, like from emptying the spit valve on a trombone to, you know, this mask that covers the mouthpiece and the face. And we've got these flute cubes set up where they're where they're contained. So there's a lot of action being taken there to ensure their success. Teaching the students at home virtually is possible, but the ensemble piece is the magical piece that that's hard to replicate digitally. And so we are, we're working towards that. I will tell you that despite these challenges, we have over 80 students participating, instrumental music students across Wampus, HCC and the high school, participating in NISMIA. That's basically an adjudication where you have to submit a video and and it's it's an impressive amount. And and our teachers have been working hard with them before school and after school to sort of prepare them. So at this point, you might be thinking, what are our goals and what are we looking at? What are we going to do with this budget money for next year? And what I would say to you is our goal right now is to get them playing. It's to get them singing. It's to it's to bring things back. So we are in touch, like I had said, with all of our neighboring schools and and with our national association, our local associations to really revisit and reexamine what are those safety protocols look like, what is reasonable? And how can we move forward so our kids get that ensemble experience and and we're able to sort of flourish in the arts again? So with that being said, there are a number of different things that we're planning. We're looking at curriculum over the summer. We are looking at the way that our schedule is set up for our classes. We're looking at, you know, offering other opportunities for students that maybe not in band orchestra and chorus, but other ensembles that might not require singing the way or a wind instrument. So for instance, we might be looking at ukulele group and we might be looking at world drumming units and things that that offer less of a threat in terms of aerosol spread of the virus. It's been a busy year. We had staffing changes at the high school and and I will tell you what a welcome to Byram Hills. This has been a roller coaster, but I'm so happy to be here and I I thank all of you for your support. Point, I'm afraid to ask, but I will say, are there any questions for what we've been up to?
I just have a comment, Pete. Sorry. My daughter's in fiddler and I have to say they're so happy to finally be doing in-person rehearsals. I think it's, you know, part of what they love about doing these productions is that camaraderie. And it's been hard doing it online. So I think they're so grateful to be able to be back in person now.
Awesome.
I I do have a question and my daughter is not in fiddler. My 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 question is, because of COVID, have you noticed any difficulties in sort of from the ground up, kids playing instruments, getting involved in the music program? Has that, has this been an impediment to the building blocks, as it were?
Ira, in in full disclosure, yes, absolutely. And and the the fact of the matter is that in order to open our school buildings this year and as of September 1st, we needed to make some really tough decisions. And and these decisions that were made over the summertime were in the in the bigger picture. So what I'm looking at specifically is that, you know, at Wampus right now, there is no instrumental music. There is no orchestra. There is no band at Wampus. And and that's our fourth and fifth grade feeder program where we start. And so that piece, you know, while while I respect and and that decision is really, really important, that does have a lasting ripple effect, right? Because we'll see that we'll see the ripples from that for a good nine years. And I and I say that to you. So there's a lot of things that we're doing to sort of combat that. When we look at the schedule that we're we're seeing right now, you have to imagine that our fifth grade class, for instance, right now, they were given instruments, they had instruments until we went out in February. And then they it, there was a little bit of virtual instruction, then it sort of fell off. And then this year they have zero. And so we are, we are going to be looking at a difficult situation where parents might say, listen, I did the trumpet for a few months, but maybe I'm not coming back to that. So so our team are working double time to really recruit and to inspire and to ignite their imaginations and to to get them excited about it again. We typically will see a drop off in school in enrollment in the ensembles for various reasons. It's a trend that you'll see across a lot of different districts. And, you know, especially when we get into a school where things are quite competitive academically and there's a lot more options. And so, yes, I'm concerned when I look at our numbers at the high school and the way that trickles back. So so there's a couple of different things that we're doing, sort of some parallel tracks. So not only are we looking at sort of reinventing our band orchestra and choruses at all levels, but we're also looking at what other coursework can we offer to our students that maybe is not as traditional as one might have imagined or has been in the past? You know, because the idea of making music, we want our kids, we look at the overall musical experience from our kids, right? And so if they're not in band orchestra and chorus, many of them graduate from Byram Hills without having participated in a high school musical ensemble. And so when we look at that schedule and we look at the offerings that we have, music theory isn't necessarily the most appealing course for them to jump into. You know, they might think, oh, I'd rather take photography or ceramics or something, which is fantastic. That might satisfy our arts requirement, but we have a responsibility to ensure that we're offering something that's going to whet their appetite for something else. And so we continue to grow that program. So it's reinventing the band orchestra choruses, but creating sort of an alternative track to engage them in the act of music making to.
I think all we can do is 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 be thankful you're thinking of it and you're looking at the various avenues, clearly. This is a knuckleball that nobody could have seen a couple of years, a year plus ago. And we know that when you came to Byram Hills, this wasn't on your list of was was not on your wish list. But we're thankful for your efforts and we look forward to hearing more from you as the months go by.
Thanks very much.
Any other question, any other questions for Pete?
I I was just going to mention on the lines of alternative, just that the the digital music components, as well as the kind of, there's a bit of a resurgence right now in digital art. And, you know, I think, you know, just having our minds open to that is really helpful and continue to evaluate whether that's appropriate for our students or not. But those are my two comments.
That's a good digital art. That's a good point.
Michael, I will say that, you know, when I look at the enrollment right now, for graphic arts too, I think there are 90 kids registered at this point in interest. So, you know, getting them behind a computer and running graphic arts is exciting and that curriculum as a tribute to the teachers has really taken off. That being said, I will tell you that there is something to be said for not sitting in front of a computer and making art. And that is something that we are hurting for right now. So so while we're exploring the music technology piece and that will be part of it, just the act of making music and engaging with one another as a tool for communication, that's sort of where we're putting our eggs right now as far as trying to push that and the while still sort of running, sorry, Andrew, still running with the tech piece.
Understood. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Pete. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Everybody, I hope I get to meet you soon.
I'm sure you will. We'll, we'll be around.
Thanks, Pete. And turn it over to Tim for curriculum development.
Great, thanks. And it's so inspirational to follow Jill, Andrew and Pete. And my job is to support them with the curriculum and their professional learning needs. So thanks to the three of them. Thanks to the board for supporting us over the past year fiscally. It's been an amazing lift, heavy lifting we've had to do. And your support has been really helpful to that. And of course, thanking our teachers and our administrative team for everything. So as you can see from my slide, aside from the small contractual obligation for salaries, there's no other change in my budget for next year. While I am increasing in some new areas, there's also some areas that I'm able to decrease in. So I'm able to keep that budget at a zero balance. And I have a few slides I'll share with you just to highlight a few areas that we'll be focusing on next year. That it's not everything in my budget, but a few highlights. At Coman Hill and Wampus, it's looking at our curriculum, literacy and mathematics, continuing with the work that we started engaging in this year. We will continue the same approach next year, just so that we have this platform built. We want to continue that, not sort of knowing what next year will be like. So there will be some budget for some additional materials, continuing with teacher training and our web-based platforms. Well, also, we had convened a science study last year to look at K-5 science and start implementing the new standards. We had to stop that with COVID last month or last year at this month. So we want to reconvene that committee and start looking at the science program again. And we may be looking to pilot something next year. Jill had mentioned I Ready. We've also implementing that K-5 with all students. And it's been really helpful. You'll recall my presentation to you with our fall data. Next week at our meeting, I'll be giving you an update on the interim assessment that we just completed and look at a comparison. We'll continue to explore that as a tool to understand where our students' learning is relative to the curriculum, where there might be gaps, where we can be getting kids caught up or where we might be able to advance kids. We want to continue exploring that with faculty. And then K-5 will also be looking, studying and piloting a social emotional curriculum. And we want to set some funds aside for training and some possible curriculum materials. At the middle and high school, HCC and the high school will be looking at new master schedules, which will include longer blocks of time. So we will implement some professional learning in the summer pretty extensively around how to use time and think about time differently. So we'll be asking teachers to participate in that over the summers and working with some longtime partners of the district with teaching and learning in this field. We also want to continue to expand our thinking about assessments and about grading practices at the middle and high school. And then also supporting the departments. There's new standards still in science to fully implement. There's new world languages standards that were just adopted by the Board of Regents yesterday, new physical education standards a few weeks ago and new standards in computer science and fine arts that always looking at where the needs are, speaking with the chairs and directors and to support professional learning in those areas. Now that we are sort of institutionalizing X-Pod for next year's calendar, we really want to think about it as a whole over the course of the year from September to June and be looking at that as a curriculum and what type of training we might put in place for that. And also, we're in year five of Global Scholars. We feel like we've really refined year one over those years. And now we're looking a little closer at years two and three. Year two, we have changed over the past couple of years, which does influence the third year of that program. So we want to bring in world savvy and do some work with us as we continue to refine like Global Scholars three-year program. And then finally, district-wide, we are starting to look at the New York State culturally responsive sustaining framework, which is new in the past year. We are looking at it deeply at the district level and thinking about how we may roll that out next year. We're working with the NYU Metro Center, an institution that's been around for about 40 years doing this work. And they're really experts in this field. So as we get closer to the end of the year and we continue to look at this framework, we'll we'll think about how we may roll that out and continue talking to the board about a possible timeline. And then Jen showed this chart of our six big areas. Thanks, Jen. You set this up as a nice conclusion for my presentation, which is continuing to support these six big idea areas and making sure we funnel all of our curricular initiatives through this lens. So again, thanks to the board, thanks to the community and our faculty, staff and administrators who support this work.
Now, even when you give us these brief presentations, they're so well thought out and created, Tim. I mean, any, any questions for our deputy superintendent?
I had a question about the Regents. Has there been any news on the waivers? Because I know that we saw last board meeting that you had put in for a waiver and that there were only four Regents that were going forward, but we were waiting to hear if those four were actually going forward.
Sure. Jen, you want me to take an opportunity now to give my update?
Yeah, I think that was part of this. We can wait.
No, I think it can go now. I think it's perfect.
It's great timing. So yes, the Board of Regents met yesterday and we just got a flurry of updates today. So I've been busy talking to a lot of people and getting some clarification. So New York State did release a few updates today and they are continuing to pursue the waiver with the United States Department of Education. The USDA has not said no to the waiver yet. However, they did put out guidance today in case we do have to administer exams. So let me separate this into two. First, the three through eight and then the Regents. The three through eight tests, what they announced, if we do have to administer them, and again, that's federal legislation that dictates that we have to give the three through eight tests in ELA and mathematics. They are only, they're reducing the test to one day. So it'll just be the first session, which is only the multiple choice section of the assessment. They are eliminating any field questions, so the assessments will be shorter. And for hybrid, they're allowing districts, we used to have to have a uniform testing schedule where all kids across the state were testing at the same time within a window on the same days. That no longer has to be the case. So at the middle school, seventh and eighth grades where we're hybrid, we only have to test when kids are in the building. We don't have to bring the hybrid kids in. They will test on different days. So we're working out a schedule right now with Angelo and with David Mack at the three through at the Wampus so that we can make sure we're ready to implement these assessments. So we'll be giving out either later this week or early next week, we'll be sending out a schedule to our families so you know when the testing dates are for your, for their children. Also, the state is allowing us, they're saying that we do not have to bring kids in for the sole purpose of testing. So if you are a full remote student, you will not be asked to come in to take the test and you will not be required to take the test if you're fully remote. And for the fourth, the fourth grade and eighth grade science test, there were usually two parts written in a performance piece. It will only be the written piece. And then for Regents, if we have to administer the state test with, we do not get the waiver, we will only administer the four Regents, Algebra I, English, Earth Science and the Living Environment or Biology. There is, like last year when the Regents were canceled, students who were in a course that culminated in a Regents had that Regents waived for graduation requirements. That is the case this year for any Regents exam that is not offered. Those students in a course, for example, if you were in global, in the global course, or if you were in US history, that ends in a Regents exam, you will be waived from taking that social studies Regents for graduation requirements. We are yet to get clarification and I just sent an email out today and received an email from a partner down at BOSI's about if we offer the Regents, if you're in Algebra I, do we have to give that Regents if a kid is going to be exempt from it? That's an outstanding question. Her take on it is that you will have to sit for the Regents, but the state is waiving the passing score. So in other words, you have to take the Regents, but you don't have to pass the Regents. We're waiting for some details on that because that adds a lot of questions for me. So that's what we're expecting tomorrow or the next day to get some clarification on Regents exams. I think that's mainly the update. We'll be sending out schedules for three through eight tests soon. The region schedule also came out and the high school will be sending that out as well. So there are dates for those four Regents exams. So that's my update.
So Tim, for the four Regents exams, so if a student, let's say, is taking Algebra I or whatever, whatever, you know, or Earth Science or any of the four that they're going to be sitting for, assuming that no change in federal waiver, then is it graded from a Byram Hills perspective and like weighted into the average like it normally would be? Or is there going to be some different system or do you not know yet?
Yes, we are definitely looking at that. We don't plan on giving it the same weighting we did if we waited at all. That's been a discussion. We don't feel it's fair to give kids a a grade on this assessment that was either 10 or 20% depending on the course. So we most likely will not count that. And we're looking at other culminating experiences that we may count as a final assessment for kids.
Got it. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the deputy? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, before we go to budget's episode here, anything else you want to add at this point?
No, just another thank you to our directors and to Tim for everything that you did this year. Andrew, when you were talking about all of these plans, infrastructure plans and, you know, changing out computers and everything, I just kept thinking about last March when you and Tim were trying to deploy all of these Chromebooks. And the fact that you've gone from then to now, still continuing to move us forward, you know, is pretty amazing. Pete, when I look at the work that you're doing right now, coming into a very new situation. Hi, we'd like you to be the Director of Fine Arts. We're not really doing music and please figure this out. We're in a pandemic and learn your way around. You've really done quite a bit for us since you've been here. So thank you tonight, too. Jill Boynton, on behalf of of the students that you serve, I just know you well and know that you know each individual child and what they need and just the hands-on care, especially during COVID, that this required from your department, from your teachers with your guidance. So this isn't just about budget seasons. This is also about the fact that you have held children and families and the school community and the school district together with your work is really.
I I must say, I don't think, I think you make a really, really important point about the students that she is involved with.
Yeah.
That Jill is involved with. I mean, it's it's difficult in the best of times. And put a pandemic into this, it must have exponentially made her job more difficult and stressful. So Jill, we're not making a big deal and a big enough deal about you. We mean to. You know, we know it's been a, a, a tough run, but you do have our support and we're very appreciative of what you're doing.
Thank you. Support is recognized as well, but it's also a team effort on everyone's fault. So I appreciate it.
Wow. It's, it's important. Okay. That brings us to budget steps from here. I believe our vice president read them off where we go from here in terms of the future budget steps. Amir, do you want to speak to that again, or are you satisfied?
I'm satisfied.
Okay.
Do you want me to read them off the dates off again?
It's on the screen. I would just remind the community that the next and last budget meeting for the community have input in pluses and minuses on the budget is next Tuesday night, the 21st. After that, we move into the final stages of the budget, budget cycle. So thank you. That, do we have any public communications or comments from the public on the budget, Dr. Colton Eckler?
No, we do not.
All right. Any other questions from the board on materials presented this evening or to be presented next week? Okay. And do we have any board member requests for further information regarding any changes to the proposed 2021, 2022 budget? As if it's not stressful enough. Okay. Well, thank you that that concludes then budget hearing number two. We will move on to unfinished business. Review of policies for first read and have a motion to approve as a first read.
Can I ask you to hold for one second? I just really want to let the directors go to sleep.
Oh, I would hope they would, they would be turning off. Of course. Yes. Your discharge with the thanks of the board. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming, Pete. Jill, thank you so much.
Good night, everybody. Good night, Andrew.
Andrew, thanks again for coming. Thank you all. Really. Yeah. Okay, Gina, don't disconnect Gina. You have to stay with us. All right. Okay. May I have a motion please to adopt as a first read? Policy 0101, gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms, 0320 evaluation, the superintendent. 032E, the form for the evaluation, 2220 board officers. 20 duties of the superintendent. We also have a mark for deletion. 2240 board superintendent relationship. I guess we no longer have a relationship with the superintendent, but I guess we'll have, we'll have to work past that, Jen. May I have a motion, please?
Some of.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any comments on policy? This is the first read now, 0101, the gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms. Any comments on that from the board or the administration?
Gina, do you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it. The gender neutral, single occupancy bathrooms policy is a new policy that is coming out of chapter three, 353 of the laws of 2020, which added a new section to the educational law. And what this states is as of March 23rd, all our single occupancy bathroom facilities in the district will be designated as gender neutral bathrooms. A, just to clarify, this is just our single occupancy bathrooms and that is defined by the state as a bathroom intended for use by no more than one occupant at a time or for a fam, or for family or assisted use and which has a door for entry into an egress from the bathroom that may be locked by the occupant to ensure safety, privacy, excuse me. So again, this is just for our single occupancy bathrooms. We are required to ensure that there's a, a sign near or beside the door to indicate that it is a gender neutral bathroom.
Any comments, any, any comments on the board on the policy itself, questions? We'll have a chance to look at it again on the second read, but anything now? 0320, any comments in the board on the evaluation of the superintendent, which is a annual as troubling as it may be. Okay. And on the form that follows that 032 dash E. I think we've been following this pretty well. Any comments from the board on 2220 board officers? We had a visit to that area in, in executive session before, before the public sessions meeting. And, and finally, 3120 duties of the superintendent. I don't know. I read that. I thought that's only half of what I know Jen does. I think that just touches, scratches the surface about what our superintendent does for us. But any, any comments on that from the board?
Yeah, if I could just add one, make one comment, that first paragraph in this 3120 policy was taken from the the policy 2240 that we're marking for deletion. We felt that since this policy duties of the superintendent talks explicitly about relationship with the board, that that standalone policy didn't really seem to make sense. So we put integrated it into this one.
Okay. So just so the board knows at the next meeting, when these, these policies and the mark for deletion appears, an affirmative vote of the board will then result in the deletion and removal of policy 2240 being subsumed now into 3120.
Right. Thank you.
Hey, any further comments from the board on the policies that have been presented to you with the markups? We have a motion on the table made in seconded. All in favor, please? Aye, aye. Okay. Thank you. Moving to new business eight. May I have a motion please to accept with gratitude? A grant from the Byron Moses Education Foundation for the Crittenen Commons, HC Crittenen School.
So moved.
Second. Who would like to speak to this?
Oh, I would really like to speak to this.
Please.
To, last year, this was actually a grant that was approved by the education foundation and prior, it was prior to the outbreak of COVID. And at the time that we were supposed to be breaking ground on this project, we recognized as a community that this was not the right time, that we needed to be careful and, and really watch what was happening in this community and, and to put a hold on everything. We really didn't know where education was going to go. We didn't know if monies needed to be applied that way. The education foundation has always been tremendously generous. They are the reason why we have the ViewSonic devices that have been a game changer for in-person instruction, if you're in another room or home instruction, if you're a hybrid student. They also spend so much time walking around the grounds with me, finding places where we were going to put outdoor shaded spaces for our kids. And then this year, they agreed to look again at the Crittenen Commons. And I think if we learned anything from the pandemic, it's that, boy, we could have used this right now for these kids. So the BHEF brought it back to the table and voted on it again and decided that this would be a year that it would be implemented. It is tremendously exciting for the kids at Crittenen. They are going to have a multi-use court. We were able to continue with the same bid from last year, which means that we could get to work on this project in April. And there is a little squeak of hope that the kids in this school year will still be able to use it by the end of the year. We'll be moving them during recess to other fields outside of the sixth grade wing for a little while, while that construction is happening, but a multi-use court where you can play volleyball, basketball, or even like street soccer kind of thing or hockey. And the district with additional money that is being put toward this is going to create some sort of amphitheater type track deck seating close in proximity to that, that's really going to create what they're calling this, the Crittenen Commons. I think it's a long overdue for our middle school kids and Kim Lappel has been asking for something like this for her kids for a very long time. She has, you know, spent her own time and money looking for ways to energize kids during recess. Cares very deeply that kids are outside, healthy and exercising. So what I love about this space is it's going to help these kids when they're at recess, but it's also a great spot for our PE classes or for classes in general to go out. And once the amphitheater seating is put into place, which presumably should be by next year. I'm not sure if that would get done before the end of the school year. Then we have places for kids to go out and conduct full classes with a platform, plays, et cetera. So this is just another tremendous gift from the BHEF. I was thinking about them when I was driving into school this morning. And our libraries and just the transformation of so many spaces. You know, now we're looking at programs within the district too. And just a group of people who during a pandemic decided that they were not going to spend the time of them on themselves, that they were going to continue in those efforts for the kids here. So I am beyond appreciative for this grant for our kids. And you may even find Dr. Lamia out there playing volleyball one Saturday when I have free time, but I want to thank the BHEF. It, it's just tremendous, absolutely tremendous.
I think we should never be in a position where we take for granted the grants from the foundation. You know, it is such a special part of what we do and such a wonderful accoutrement to what we do. And without the foundation over the last 20 some odd years, we'd be in a different place.
We certainly would have not been ready with the technology.
We would not have been ready with it. We'd be back in whiteboards. Maybe, maybe not back in whiteboards, but
But it was just a handful of years ago that they were helping us to enhance our infrastructure.
So thank you again to, to the, to the foundation. And I know there were several people sitting on this board with, with ties to the foundation. And when you speak to your friends there, you should also please directly express our gratitude to them for what they've been doing for, for the district and for the children. It really is very meaningful. So any other comments or questions from the board on this grant?
Very briefly, Ira, and I just want to, I want to echo what you said and what Jen just said. You know, we say time and time again, how the BHEF are integral partners with the district. I don't think we could say it enough. I mean, what, as you said, Jen, what they, you know, do and continue to do and they go just beyond. When I saw this particular memo acceptance request, I was especially pleased because I think you're actually not going far back enough, Jen. Back on my last year on the BHEF as chairman in 2018, 2019, this grant was discussed. It wasn't quite ready. It had to be baked out some more. Everyone knew it would be a phenomenal addition to our district. And like you said, the timing couldn't be better right now. I think the kids could really, you know, use this space. And I'm just, I was just thrilled to see that this, you know, finally passed and it's going to regret, you know, ground is going to break and it's going to be ready for our middle school children. I'm just thrilled about this.
We're, we're a very fortunate district to be able to have this. There are, there are many districts that would shake this, shake their heads in envy. And I don't mean that any pejorative way to the districts, which is so fortunate to what we can do for our children and our students because of the work of the foundation. So.
And don't forget that Thursday night is a foundation fundraiser, right? They are having a, an event. So if anybody wants to see that, they could go to the BHEF link right on our website and I will be attending. Hopefully we'll see everybody there.
I'm waiting to watch you play volleyball, Jen. That's, I've had on my calendar now.
Ira, I was kidding. Although I did play high school basketball, but one would never.
All right. A motion to, we have a motion on the table to accept with gratitude, the 2020, 2021 Byron Mills Foundation grant for the Crittenen Commons. All in favor, please? Thank you. And with gratitude, it is accepted unanimously. That really is special. Staff reports, Madam Superintendent?
Okay, I am going to share my screen. All right. Here we are. Well, it wasn't the last game, but here is our boys varsity basketball team. They did win that game 58 to 45. And congratulations, Ira. I don't know if you want to talk about our boys basketball team for a second.
I will certainly speak about that. Both, both teams deserve to be spoken about.
Exactly. All right. First, I want to talk a little bit about our phase in plans. The return to school review and recommendation to the Board of Education tonight. This is the plan for us to proceed. First, I want to talk about faculty, staff and administrator vaccinations. Our continued quarantine since two weeks ago when we met last. Student, oh, sorry, student attendance review. And density review and a look at overflow rooms and then our phase in plan to add an additional 10% percent of students in grade seven to 12 back into our classes. So first, just taking a look at faculty, staff and administrators. Right now, we are not finished surveying the staff and faculty. We just sent them a survey yesterday. We have to upload that survey by this Wednesday and we'll get some, some numbers by then. I think about 66% of Gina, you may have better numbers than me, but I think it's about 66%
Could you refresh your screen? Because those numbers are there.
Actually, hold on one second. Gina, I was wondering. And now the board has to see that I have 300 some odd slides in this slide deck. This is my, this is my COVID slide deck.
It's like you're journaling, Jen.
One day I'm going to put, I'm going to create a, I'll create a nice little journal out of it. All right.
There you go.
Thank you, Gina.
I had a little nervous. Like they're in there.
No, I just thought, I thought it was me, maybe something that I did. All right. So when we look at faculty, okay, we've had more since then. 70% of our faculty, 41% of our staff and 92% of our administrators have been vaccinated. This is just a survey asking, have you already been vaccinated? So this doesn't mean that people don't have upcoming appointments, et cetera. And we plan to continue to ask these questions of people who didn't answer yet in the next few weeks. It's required by us of the Department of Health to send. So I think that that's pretty strong. Within 24 hours, we've heard back from that many faculty that they are vaccinated and admin. So a good step in the right direction. COVID quarantines, if you look at the bottom right-hand side, you'll see that total positive cases, 137. Two W means two weeks. So when, since two weeks ago, we've had 11 additional COVID positive cases in the district. 50 under the number of quarantine cases. That's just a case. A case might include five people that had to be quarantined or 15 people. In the past two weeks, we have had 10 additional quarantine cases. Now, five of those have been through athletics. Two of them were opposing schools who had a COVID positive individual and our athletes had to quarantine as a result of it. But I'm showing you this because 11 positive cases in two weeks' time, 10 quarantines in two weeks' time, and we are maintaining six feet of distance. So I cannot imagine as we start, still talk about three feet and six feet, what it would look like right now if we had to quarantine all of the people who were direct contacts of those 11 positive cases. We're in a much better situation in staying the six feet apart. So we do care though about having our students in school. And this is, hopefully you could see this, this little student attendance review. I asked the middle school, which is the top one and the high school, the bottom one, to just let me know from March 1st until March 11th, how many students were expected on that day, how many attended and how many did not attend. The not attended means that they actually were partaking in the class remotely. Okay. So if you just look at the not attended column, there were, on March 1st, there were at the middle school for seventh grade, 11 kids who could have sat in school, but they stayed home instead. On March 3rd, 17 kids stayed home. They chose to be remote instead of going into school when they could have. Now, those are not, you know, hugely large numbers for seventh grade. If you look at eighth grade, not attended, it's a little bit different. It ranges on one day, there's only two kids. On another day, you know, it may get as high as 15 kids who chose to stay home on that day. So we are seeing these numbers back and forth, 10 here, 15 there. And we start to ask the question, well, we're not even filling our classes right now with the 50% that we think could sit there six feet apart. How many more students can we add and still sit six feet apart or even use overflow rooms? If you take a look at the high school, you have for ninth grade, if you look across the top, ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th, the expected, the attended and the not attended in person. Okay. Which is the same as seventh and eighth grade. So you'll see a big difference in that not attended in person for ninth grade, very low numbers, right? The ninth graders are coming to school. If you look at 10th grade, those numbers creep up a little bit, whereas the ninth graders on the first had eight kids who, who chose to stay home and be remote. There were 16 in the sophomore class. There were 23 in the junior class and there were 40 in the senior class. So we all see the same, the same situation happening. Freshmen are attending more often than seniors. We're not filling all of the seats in our classes. So let's take a look at density. At the top in the little box, this is for the high school. I wanted to know what I wanted to know what would be the number of students in overflow? If we brought in 10% more of our students and every single child attended? Well, we know every single child is not going to attend. That's a number one. But if every child came in on the days they were supposed to, and we allowed 60% of the kids in, how many students would be in an overflow room? So for the top chart, you'll see 36 kids would be in overflow rooms, 32 kids on Tuesday, 69 on Wednesday, 138 on Thursday, I'll explain that, and 79 on Friday. Now, keep in mind, if you look at those 36 kids that are going to be in an overflow room on Monday, or better yet, take a look at Thursday. Thursday, because of the way the cohorts would land and because of the number of classes in that day, we would hit the, the 138 mark. If we had 138 students in overflow for ninth, 10th, 11th and 12th grade, if you divide that by the four grades, and then you divide that by each of the classes, 138 divided by four is not that many kids in an overflow room. Is it better for kids to go into school six days out of 10 days instead of five days out of 10 days? And maybe you sit in an overflow room for one of those days, for one of those classes, but you actually attend the rest of your classes? Or if the classes are not really full, you sit into the classes. So I think you're, you're increasing the chance that you're going to be in person in your class, even if it means for a period or two, you are a student who is in the overflow room, which would be the rooms the kids are, are used to already. So we have four different spaces, one for freshmen, sophomores, juniors, seniors. It's where kids, when they first enter school where they are, if they have free periods, it's where they go. So it's, it's a familiar place for these kids. So could we do it? Could we bring back 10% of the population? And the answer is yes. So if you look at Monday, 36 children. If you evenly divided them over the four rooms, it would mean that at some point during that day, you would have nine kids in each of those overflow rooms. It doesn't even mean it's every single period. So increase the chances of kids, A, going to school and B, being able to sit in class. Because just because you're in an overflow room, doesn't mean you're in an overflow room for the day. You would be in there for potentially that period. We'll have to come up with a system so we don't have a child who came to school and sat in an overflow room every period, right? That should never be happening. We've talked at the middle school and the high school of setting up systems to make sure it doesn't. So the question is, if we could bring back 60% of our kids, sometimes they might have to be in an overflow room, which just means they're learning like they were at home for that one period. If you take a look at 80%, it's just not doable at six feet, right? 298 kids in an overflow room, 496 kids on a Thursday. At this point, we would actually have to be bringing the kids back in at less than six feet apart. If we wanted to do more than the 60%, there are just too many kids that would be in an overflow room. And I mean, at that point, you know, you're decreasing the chances that they're actually going to be sitting in a classroom, which is the purpose of having kids in and having an overflow room. So this is what it looks like. The top half is what it would have looked like if we just stayed this way from now until the end of the year. You know, your A through K's coming in on Monday through Tuesday, splitting of Wednesdays and L through Z's Thursdays and Fridays. But if you take a look at the bottom, this is what Chris Walsh and his assistant principals, Kim Lappel and Angelo Ancona, have put together. So remaining the way we are until April 19th. At April 19th, you'll see that there will be new cohorts developed, right? So on different days, you will have different groups meeting. So they split these kids into multiple cohorts in order to reconfigure the numbers to get the right amount of kids in every day. So if you look on the 19th, you'll have A through C, D through G and H through L will be in on that day. Okay. If you look on the 26th, there, they seem to be doing mostly those Mondays, right? If you look at the day of the week. And then you have the Reds, the G, the D through G, H through L, M through R. Those kids are going to be coming in as another cohort. So in other words, instead of having two cohorts, there are many models you could do. You could break it up into five cohorts and have three go at a time in order to make that work. Sometimes you can get as high as seven or eight cohorts to make those numbers work. But this is a way to bring kids in six days out of 10 with minimal opportunities that they are going to have to be in these overflow rooms. I think considering the attendance that I showed you earlier and that even right now, our kids are not attending in full complement, it behooves us to see if we could bring more kids in because we know we can handle the extra 10% even if everyone is fully in on those days. So increased density, increase kids' opportunities to have face to face with teachers and not to be remote. We could do all different types of things. Now, instead of doing this, could we have done something where we just said, who wants to remain remote for the rest of the year and who wants to come in? And I don't want to put our families in that situation, right? You, this is your schedule. If something occurs in your family and you need to be remote for the week, I want you to have the opportunity to be remote for the week. We still are in the midst of a pandemic. And I know that every family has to make different family choices in what they're going to do. I don't feel it's fair to bind them to any kind of an agreement right now, moving forward for the rest of the year. I also was very conscious of something. If, if I'm a student who comes to school every day and the reason I come is because I think they are keeping me safe in school by making me six feet apart from everyone. If I heard that we were going to change those parameters, I might not feel safe anymore. And now I'm a kid who has enjoyed school, but I now have to be home because my school is doing something different that's making me feel unsafe. So I don't want to alienate those kids who are in because they are trusting that what we're doing is safe. And the fact that we've had so many COVID positive cases and quarantines that have not affected the kids in class, I say that we continue to do this at six feet for now. There may be new guidance coming out. Many of our neighbors, as you know, are pulling kids back three feet. And that's starting right now, like as of this week. So I am eager to see what the results are of that. And I really do hope for our neighbor's sake that they're positive results and that perhaps with vaccines and everything, we're moving in a positive direction. I just need to move a little more cautiously than that. So what is the rollout? How does this look? Our timeframe, our operations teams in each building have been in progress. Faculty and staff in learning about this and weighing in is still in progress. Our stakeholder group, I'm discussing it with the board tonight. Our stakeholder group will be meeting next Monday and I will be presenting to them what I showed to you. Parents will be getting notifications from the building principals on March 23rd. There will be follow-up principals coffees on March 25th, just for questions. Or if they just want to hear the principals talk through what it looks like for their specific child. And then the full, and kids are going to hear right after the parents hear, and then a full phase in of 10% on April 19th. And that marks the beginning of the fourth quarter, which is why we chose that time. So the kids won't have a mix up, you know, before the quarter ends. Let's just let everybody end the same way they started. That is it, I guess. Are there any questions or any other slides you want me to go back through?
Just a couple of quick questions. It seems like a very sensible plan. The first is just, do we have enough capacity in lunchrooms? And I guess now the weather's getting nicer and maybe more people could be outside too, just to accommodate that extra 10% and keep them at six feet at lunch. And then just the other question is with overflow rooms, does it work that you may have, let's say, 30 students in a room and they're tuning into maybe 10 different classrooms? So they may be like talking at different times, but does it work with people having headsets on? And have they, have you seen it work before?
Yeah. So regarding the lunch, they will still maintain six feet of distance at lunch. We do have the space at lunch. And with the weather nicer, we are going to try to kick kids to eat outside. I mean, first of all, on a regular day, I want kids to go outside and eat lunch and not be sitting in a cafeteria. So yeah, we'll continue that effort. And as far as kids being in the room together, they're doing it now. So I was in a freshman Spanish class the other day. Some of the kids in class were working with some of the kids at home. They all have their earbuds on and they're talking, and you know, you can hear multiple people talking, but they can't because they have their earbuds in and they're talking to each other. So I was witnessing that in action, kids in the room, working with kids at home. And it was really seamless. So I'm sure that we could do it in that scenario too. And the key though is going to be develop the right system so that there isn't a child who says, I had five classes today and four of them were in the overflow room. I mean, that's like the thing that we have to build on now, and I'm sure we, we can figure that out. Chris and Kim are really good at that. You know, even if it's something simple at the middle school, like, you know, if you were in an overflow room, you, you take this purple, you get one of these. And when you go into a class, a teacher sees that and they know you've been in an overflow room already today, right? Or whatever. It's, it could be something very subtle. You know, we don't want to make a huge machination out of it, but that's something we have to watch for.
Is there staff for the overflow rooms?
Yes. So we currently have, sometimes we have kids in there. So we have hall monitors, we have teacher aides. We are fully staffed as far as those rooms are concerned. And the middle school's not going to be an issue, really. They thought anywhere from, most of them had one or two kids that might be in an overflow room. But truthfully, we do believe we could fit two more desks in the class and still keep it at six feet. There was one class that had, it was an English class, an eighth grade class that had seven kids in the overflow. But they're not even sure that all those kids are going to be coming to school anyway. So, you know, we're, we're looking at seven kids if every single child attended in person on that day, which I'm not sure we're going to see that. But I know, you know, from a parent that I trust, she couldn't believe, she said, I would not want my kid to go to school and ever sit in an overflow room. She went home and asked her son, how do you feel about that? If you had the choice to go to school, but it meant you had to sit in an overflow room for a period or two? How would you feel about that? And he said, I would sign up right now. So she said, well, you know, what kids want and you know, what we think might be two different things. They desperately want, I think, some of them to get back to school.
Yeah. Jen, we have about 10% of our students at the middle school are full remote. reduces the amount of kids we wouldn't be expecting to come in.
Yeah.
Any other questions for the superintendent on this?
Thank you again, Jen. Great, great stuff. And I, you know, continue, encourage you to push like you are. So that's great. With safety being paramount.
Number one, I, I know that Gina Cunningham and the assistant principals and I have not had a weekend since we opened school up. And I can't, I can't, I don't know that we could even keep up with the number of quarantines safely if we pulled all these kids back in right now. I, I don't know how, we'd be quarantining like crazy. I had a teacher at the elementary school today told me her daughter in her home district went back to school yesterday. The daughter's friend, who's in another class in the same grade level, had her first day back and they're already quarantined for 10 days. So it's very hard once you start pulling kids at three feet. And you know, it's, it's not only that it's difficult, I just don't want to hear that there are in-school transmissions. It's the thing I'm afraid of. So what we can do, stay cautious for now, and I'm eager to hear more guidance. You know, we were talking before the meeting tonight about some new information that came out from Harvard. We're trying to find, Scott and I were talking about it. You know, just always remaining educated about what's happening and what the new parameters are is how we need to proceed. We are looking at planning for the fall already, Mike.
Any, any updates on the Miramis testing from the last week?
Yeah, we've been doing great. Our kids are super spitters. They're fantastic. We had no, no positive cases again last week. And it was so funny, Gina and I, don't ask, but Gina and I facilitate the COVID saliva testing at the middle school. And we actually had one week, was it not last week, the week before Gina? Where everybody that came in had done it already. I think it was two weeks ago and they all just came in and, you know, did their saliva tests and turned them in. I mean, it was like, wow, where, where did this go, right? The kids are really doing well with it. And I'm, I'm grateful that we're continuing it. We will have that. I think Kelly, it's going to go on the next agenda to extend that for another couple of weeks. Miramis has been great with us too, because we haven't used the number of tests that we signed up for. They're enabling us to continue the use of those tests. So let's say we promised them 300 tests a week and we've been using 200. They've been keeping that extra 100 in a bank for us and are allowing us to use it through. So they've been very fair with us and a really good company to us too.
Good.
And that, that's not.
Just on that note, just the one thing I want to point out, just for the community, for you and for Gina to be, you know, helping in that process on a hands-on basis facilitating those COVID tests. I just, you have to be called out for just outstanding service. Because in your roles, obviously that could be delegated. But instead, I mean, and I know there are many people helping you. And the staff has been extraordinary, but for the two of you to be there hands-on is just unbelievably phenomenal. So.
We all pitch in. If you go to Coman Hill in the afternoon, you'll see Kelly Seibert, who knows every single child's name and their car, and he helps with dismissal. I help too, but you know, really, it's all hands on deck this year to make sure it's done right.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. All right. I have a few more things, just three more. Stephanie Greenwald, let us know that five of our seniors competed in the Upstate Junior Science and Humanity Symposium. First place general biology, Olivia Kanter. First place biomedical science, Mia Dietrich. Second place biomedical science, Luke Brioti. This means that Olivia and Mia will be, they presented for a place at JSHS Nationals later in the month. And we plan to hear more about them, which is pretty amazing. This is something that's very, the next two things are really just humanitarian, could make me cry. I know that you know that Val Sloan and Shari Mattisow were the parents behind getting us a lot of our vaccinations for our faculty and staff. I think that they got us, us personally, about 60 or more. And they were also helping members of our staff, I spoke about them at the last board meeting, to help their, you know, their parents get vaccines, et cetera. And then they moved their show over to New Rochelle and are now helping people there. And they were featured on News 12. But Shelley Mayer is hosting a Women's History Month celebration honoring women who go above and beyond in contributing to the community. And she's recognizing these women who stepped up to help our community and meet the challenges of the coronavirus pandemic. I am so excited by that. They are, I, I can't even begin to tell you what, what a gift they have given everybody in this district. So congratulations to both of them and thank you for sharing your time with us. And another happy message, Amy Passman shared this with me today, but there are many teachers who are behind this. They recognize that this year has been a challenge for everyone in our community. And they're recognizing people in our community who have done much for the, the town. So what they did is they started putting together a sort of like GoFundMe type thing where they were collecting money to do food drive donations. So a company in town called Taylor Made, which many of us are familiar with, these teachers and staff members ordered through Taylor Made, owned by a family in the district. They delivered dinners to the workers at urgent care facility in Armonk. Our teachers and staff collected money and threw a more a pizzas, salad and wings were delivered to the fire department and ambulance corps in town. And our teachers and staff members through the Bagel Emporium, which is also owned by a former family from the school district. They made two different deliveries of sandwiches and coffee to grocery store workers at Chico's. And I, there's, there's a ton more. Oh yeah, Gavi delivered lunch to essential workers at Northern Westchester Hospital. Bagel Emporium also sent another bagel breakfast to the grocery, oh, I did that one already. And Bee's Cakes delivered three dozen cookies to Armonk, oh no, it's this week, don't tell them, to Armonk Police on Thursday. And this is just our educators and our staff members who got together and wanted to say thank you back to the community who's done so much for them. And I wouldn't have known this unless I happened upon it today. That's what I love about this. I found this out by accident. So I just want to thank everyone and I'll be making my own contributions to that cause to say thanks back to our community for everything they've done. And that is a good way to end it.
That's a great way to end it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Dr. Tim, anything?
Nope, already gave it with the SCD update, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. President's report. I, as Jen mentioned, I, I did see the boys and girls basketball games. Obviously this year, the championship rounds have been somewhat modified by a section one. The girls played Ry on Saturday afternoon. And in the beginning, they found themselves down by 15, 16 points. They rallied back, they played so well, they were so tough. They got it to 59, they got to 57 all with like 15 seconds to go. Rice scored, we go down the court and we have three good looks, can't sink it. And at the buzzer, one of our players gets fouled shooting. So we have two free throws to try to tie the game. Didn't work out, but, but Coach Maroney, just a fabulous job with the girls and to the, and to the players themselves. You showed such, such courage and grit. Congratulations to you. And the boys made it to the finals of their bracket, as it were. And they played Sleepy Hollow. And it really wasn't much of a contest. We, we pretty much had the game in hand all the way. And so another Ted Reaper victory. He said to me, it was, it's not a gold ball, but it's nice. And it isn't a gold ball, but nonetheless, congratulations to the boys on another championship in, in the COVID era. But they did play very well. And I also want to note that the goalie on the ice hockey team was singled out for an award. Journal news player of the week award. So congratulations to him on a, it's not easy to get that, being a hockey goalie, getting all that rubber shot at you. But so despite the crazy difficulties in athletics, Byram Hills has still continued to do well and will continue to do well, thanks to the coaching and the students. So well done. And I, I also noted that one other thing I wanted to mention. Put it down. The oh, right. For those of you who watch Broadway and things, you'll see that a number of the Byram Hills graduates of years past have continued to distinguish themselves on the stage. And I, I won't drop names, but it's easy to find. So our, our, our long history of excelling in the arts continues there as well. So it was, it was nice to see. Okay, any committee board member reports?
Just a very quick comment on the BHF, because the meeting was, I guess it was last week, and it was a great meeting. And there's just a lot of activity going on in the BHF in addition to the grant that we saw tonight, just a lot of things that they're looking at and exploring and ideas that are coming forth from various buildings and then a lot of fundraising going on. So just a great, great meeting to be a part of.
Scott, when is your signature fundraiser? Jen, I think had mentioned it.
Yeah, it's coming up. It's
Thursday.
Thursday.
Right. I remember those fundraisers many years of our old board member, John Grine, every year he'd be the one with the, with the container for the cash. Every year he'd be the guardian of the cash at the fundraiser. You sit at the table and you couldn't get near it.
And nowadays, no cash passes his hands.
That's right. He loved, he loved, he loved those events. He and Rick Kaplan loved those events.
You, you're dating yourself, Ira. It's all Bitcoin now. There, that's what the fundraising is being done with.
I don't even know what that is. Okay. I don't know, people who invested, some did well and some not so well. Any topics for jet, future agenda, RFIs from the board at this point? Communications, we had a communication from a group in town talking, interested in the condition of the athletic fields. And wanting to make sure we were on top of that. Thank you to Jason for passing that information along. And, and there was one, a bit of news I did want to tell the board. It's a passing of someone who taught for a long time and taught well, the kindergarten teacher Carol Glasser. I don't know if that name means anything to some of you, but she taught in the district for 20 some odd years. She was a wonderful kindergarten teacher. And she passed away last week. And so on behalf of the board and the administration, we send our condolences to the Glasser family on their loss. Okay.
Ira, there was one other question. Lori, I think there was a question about, addressed to the board about the current eighth grade and what we may be doing with the fact that this group, when they were in sixth grade, they did a pancake breakfast. And, and I will have Kim share this information out with her families in the eighth grade. Sixth grade, they ran a pancake breakfast as a fundraiser. Then seventh grade happened, they didn't go on any trip. And eighth, they didn't do any fundraising in seventh grade. They didn't do any in eighth grade either. But the question is that fundraising that happened in sixth grade, where does that go for these students? So Kim Lappel is trying to plan an outdoor experience at the Sharp Reservation with these eighth graders. She's also trying to plan for an outdoor graduation at Crittendon, which would require big screens, et cetera. So just so you know that that's where that's happening in the remaining, as in every year, any fundraising that doesn't get expended goes into the account for the next year that's coming up. So if any board members wanted to share that out, but Kim will share that too with her parents.
I thought we were just going to give them their diplomas and send them on their way. Okay.
Exciting to think of graduations.
Thank you, Jen, for making the graduations happen, because I've heard many are being canceled again. So thank you very much.
Oh no, we may be doing four graduations again in 100 degree weather, but the good thing is that Tim, right, and Gina, our gowns and Kelly, they're only like 50 or 60 pounds each. They were clearly made for graduation in winter. I don't really know. But anyway, we are happy to do it. It was, last year was actually one, it was one of the nicest graduation ceremonies we've had four times over, but it was really beautiful.
We'll, we'll hopefully look forward to good weather.
Yeah.
Okay, there is no, what is really, there's the executive session we reported at the beginning. No minutes to approve. So at this point, at 9:07, may I have a motion, please, to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, please, all in favor? Thank you, Byram Hills. Good night. We'll see you next week. Good night, everyone.